Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting for September 1, 2020. We want to remind Victoria residents that they can watch City Council Meetings live on Sunday, 15 or 115 on our city website at www.victoriatx.gov/VTV15 or on the city's Facebook page. Although we have resumed in-person meetings, the risk of spreading and contracting COVID-19 is still a reality. Seating in the city council chambers is limited to allow for social distancing, and there are many residents who may be in our high-risk population. For those reasons, we will also continue allowing citizens' participation through video conference. For those who wish to access the video conference during Citizens Communications, visit www.zoom.com. From your web browser, select "Join a Meeting," located at the top of your browser, and input Again, 444-573-113 for the meeting ID. Select "Join," followed by "Open Zoom," then "Join with Computer Audio." Click on the icon labeled "Participants" to access the option to raise hand at the bottom of the screen. Once you click "Raise Hand," our moderator will announce you by your username you've selected, and that will be your cue to begin speaking to council. If you wish to participate in person, please submit a comment card to city staff, who will then bring them up to me. I will call each name individually when it is your turn to speak. Comments will be limited to five minutes in duration and will be received by audio only. There will not be an opportunity to provide any presentation of visual materials, either in person or via teleconference. Please remember to silence any cell phones, television, or other background noise so that we can clearly hear your comments. It is generally the practice of the City Council not to respond to comments made during this time, but city staff will be available to follow up as necessary. I will now check for our quorum call. At this time, I will ask our city secretary to call the roll.
Councilman Delgarza?
I am here.
Mayor Protim Solis?
Here.
Councilwoman Bocknight?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Young?
Here.
Councilman Lofgren?
Here.
Mayor McCoy?
Here. We have a full quorum tonight. All council members are here. I will now open our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. [applause] The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice As we do at every meeting, I welcome citizens that are here in person or online, and invite you to participate in our meetings when you wish to do so. I will now move on to communications. Are there any announcements, Mr. Garza?
I do have an announcement, but I believe you have one related to the census as well.
Okay. The 2020 Census Self-Response Deadline has been moved back up to September 30, 2020. Again, that's September 30, 2020. So it's important that we all respond now to the 2020 Census. It's vital to our city's representation, funding, and success. Census data helps determine the number of seats each state holds in the U.S. House of Representatives and how billions of dollars in federal funds will be allocated to states and communities for the next 10 years. As of today, our state self-response is 60.3%, and Victoria County's self-response rate is a little under that average at 59.1%. Victoria residents can respond online at 2020census.gov, by phone, or by mail. Again, you have until September 30 to respond. And for more information, please visit www.victoriacounts.com. Hey, Mr. Garza.
Quick announcement. The Victoria Chamber of Commerce's next luncheon is next Friday, and it'll feature yours truly Mayor Rowley McCoy in his State of the City speech. And this is a reminder to, of course, everybody present tonight and the community that might be tuning in. This will take place next Wednesday, September 9, from 11:30 to 1:15 p.m. at the Victoria Community Center. Tickets are still available and can be purchased on the Victoria Chamber of Commerce website at victoriam chamber.org. Safety measures will be observed, including hand sanitizing stations, and social distancing will be observed in the layout. Face masks will be required to enter. Lastly, the city will be live-streaming the event in order to facilitate a broader audience, considering that it's the mayor whose speech, considering it's the mayor who's the guest speaker for the event. And we'll also air it later on VTV 15. Thank you. I got through that.
I hope it's worth watching.
Well, we can turn it off if it's not.
Well, that's right. If I have you in the room, though, you're just stuck.
I'll be there.
At any rate, well, I think we'll move on to, we do have one public recognition tonight in the form of a proclamation. Mr. Gush?
Yes, sir. There's a proclamation tonight for Hunger Action Month, and it is signed today by Rowley McCoy. And it reads in part, "Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Texas, where 14% of people struggle with hunger; and whereas more than 1 in 4 children in Victoria County do not know where their next meal is coming from; and whereas Victoria City, the city of Victoria, is committed to working with the Food Bank of the Golden Crescent to educate people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues; and whereas the Food Bank of the Golden Crescent has distributed more than 5 million pounds of food to people in 11 counties this year through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations; and whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to engage the public in action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations, to end hunger one helping hand at a time; and whereas food banks across the country, including the Food Bank of the Golden Crescent, continue to work tirelessly throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end hunger in their local community, now therefore I, Rowley McCoy, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do hereby call this observance to the attention of our citizens and proclaim September 2020 as Hunger Action Month in Victoria, Texas." And it is signed today by Rowley McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Gush. Ms. Cato here this evening.
You're welcome to say a few words on the microphone if you like.
I do want to say thank you to the city for their support. It is awesome, and all these great people that came out and helped us earlier in the year. This year has certainly been a different year. Last year, we distributed 5.6 million pounds of food all year. As of yesterday, we are at 5.2 million pounds of food. So we're on record to be a record-breaking year. I also did some research, and since 2000, we have distributed 88 million pounds of food in our service area. So thank you again for your support. We look forward to being in the new building soon, and we look to see your smiling faces volunteering with us. Thank you again.
Thank you for all you do, Rowley. It's one of the sad truths that we have to deal with, and you do an excellent job helping us take care of it. So thank you so very much. Okay, are there, moving on, are there any items from council tonight? Hearing none, we'll move into Citizens Communication. I will ask, we have quite a few items with public hearings tonight, so I would ask that you reserve your comments on those items until it comes up as a public hearing moving forward. I do have one card tonight from Lori Eder. Is that the proper name? Please step forward. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to stop by and introduce myself. I have, my name's Lori Eder, and I've submitted an application for an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. I submitted that last Friday to the secretary. Just wanted to put my application in. I have a degree in landscape architecture, over 20 years in project management for civil engineering, land planning, and landscape architecture projects, 15 years in marketing, and in the last four as the general manager for the club at Colony Creek. I've lived here for four years, and I would be most honored to serve and volunteer for my city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for putting your name forward. Okay, we will now, is there any other, is there anyone else here that would like to speak before council? Is there anyone online?
Yes, Mayor, there is Cole Morgan who wishes to speak.
Okay, if you can please put him on.
I think he got stated prior.
Okay. Are there any, are there any more? Okay, then we'll move on out of Citizens Communication to, huh? Do we have one?
Cole Morgan, he didn't come up?
No, he left the.
Oh, okay.
So seeing none, we'll move on to items with public hearings. Mr. Gush?
Item C1 is an ordinance to amend city code to add a retention schedule for the Victoria Fire Department's first responders' body-worn camera videos.
I think we have a presentation by Chief Fox.
Yes, and April.
Yes. We're gonna do this together. So, good evening, Mayor and council. Texas Local Government Code requires the governing body of each political subdivision to establish a records-retention program. The City of Victoria created a program back in March of 1982, and in August of 2018, we updated, the City of Victoria adopted a records-retention schedule promulgated by the Texas State Library and Archives Commission, and stipulated that changes made to those TSLAC schedules would automatically be adopted by the City of Victoria. The current TSLAC schedules do not include a retention schedule for video and audio recordings captured by body-worn cameras of first responders other than law enforcement. Before starting a program to use audio and video recording devices worn by our fire department personnel, the City of Victoria must first establish a records-retention policy for the records recreated by those devices. And Chief Fox is going to tell you a little bit more about their program.
Thank you, April. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. And yeah, as April mentioned, you know, we're here to ask tonight to amend our records-retention policy because of a new program that we're going to look at implementing this year. And it's our EMS body-worn camera program, and that's nothing new to you. It's the exact same thing that our local police office, police department does, just a different uniform that's wearing those cameras. Uh-oh, James, there, oh, push the wrong button, sorry. And, you know, you kind of ask, well, why, why does the Victoria Fire Department want to do an EMS body-worn camera program? Real simple, three, three main reasons. One, to protect our paramedics from assault and false claims. Just this, about a year or so ago, we had a false claim, but it was a very serious claim that we had to take serious, and it caused one of our members to be off for two months until we could get this complaint resolved. If we would have had a body-worn camera, that complaint would have been resolved within minutes or hours. And the other thing, you know, we, as we were researching this program, we found that there is a rising trend where first responders are being assaulted. This article out of Austin where 63% of their medics were assaulted got us curious as to, man, how many of our medics have been assaulted? And 22 in the past year of our Victoria Fire Department members, out of 38 that completed the survey, have been physically or verbally assaulted while on a call. So those are, that's one of the main reasons. The next one, just like the police department, is to create transparency, so that anybody in the city or that has questions about the government would be able to, we'd be able to provide transparency into our operations. And lastly, quality assurance. It's a great teaching and coaching and mentoring tool that we'll be able to use. The body-worn, camera-worn program, trial program, is about a 30 to 60-day trial. We'll be trying two types of cameras. One is a, you know, a camera, or, excuse me, a glass or a eye-mounted program. The other is like you see our police officers wear, which is a chest or body-worn, or truly on the body. So we'll be looking at those two programs, and while we're working on those, we'll be collecting the data, and that's why April needs the records-retention schedule. And you didn't see this in the budget, because we do not have this in our budget. If we, if this program looks like it's going to be successful, we'll be funding the initial program through grants. And now I'll turn it back over to April, unless you have any questions about the records-retention piece.
I don't have a question concerning the record retention, but how close are we to sending live video to the ER so the doctor?
Very close. And one of these cameras here does the exact thing. It's called live streaming, and we're moving ever so closely to telemedicine and live streaming to the ER. And these, this equipment will be able to do that.
Wow. Nice.
I'll finish this up. By amending City Code Section 2-24, the Management and Retention of City Records, the city can establish a records-retention program for the audio and video recordings captured by our camera, cameras worn by our fire department personnel that actually mirrors the retention period outlined by TSLAC for audio and video recordings captured by law enforcement officers. So that's all we did, was Chief made our own schedule to mirror exactly what the state already requires for law enforcement videos. It's just because they specifically defined in the state's schedules that those were worn by law enforcement officers is why we had to create our own schedule, because technically they are not law enforcement officers. So once we make this change, then we will have our own schedule. And the state is working on making changes to their schedules to include this, because several other fire departments and EMS are going to this type of camera and video and audio recordings. So once they do that, then we will automatically take up the state's schedules if there are any differences from ours. So if I have any questions, we're glad to answer.
Questions? Hearing none, I will now open a public hearing on this matter. If there's anyone in the audience, I don't see any cards, but is anyone that wants to speak to this matter, please step forward. Seeing none, Ms. Foot, do we have anyone online?
Yeah, I've got two individuals. The red, first one is Cole Morgan. I'm not sure if that was the one that originally.
Okay.
I'll just connect it all, I'll have him just.
He needs, he needs to be reminded that at this point.
This is a public hearing?
Right.
On this matter?
It would be up to, it'd be your discretion, Mayor, if you wanted to allow him to speak.
Well, he's waited online, so let's see, give him an opportunity to speak.
I disconnected.
Okay. Anybody else?
Clearly, they don't know, they need some assistance on.
Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second on this item. Is there any further discussion of council? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. On to item number two, please.
Mayor McCoy, item C2 is an ordinance to approve the Community Development Block Grant, Consolidated Plan, and 2019 Annual Action Plans, substantial amendments for CARES Act funding.
Good evening. It's nice to be back. So tonight, we have some amendments to our five-year consolidated plan, the 2015-2019 consolidated plan, and then the 2019 annual action plan, so that we can finish allocating all of our CARES Act funding. So as previously, we have allocated $246,500 of our CARES Act funding. As a reminder, these funds must be used for the prevention, preparation, and/or response to COVID-19, and all CDBG regulations do have to apply for this funding. And each program that we use these funds for does still have to meet a national objective. So these are the programs that we have previously allocated funding towards. I won't go through all of them, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. And so tonight, we're asking you to allocate the remaining $109,157. So I will quickly go through what those, what that money is going to be allocated towards. So the First Amendment is, the Boys and Girls Club had originally requested a $10,000 increase so that they could provide scholarships for summer camp. They were not able to run that program, and so they will not be needing those funds. So we were decreasing the budget by $10,000. We are allocating an additional $10,000 to Community Action Committee for additional utility assistance for those that are behind due to COVID-19. Court-appointed special advocates had some technology expenses related to their response to COVID-19, and so we are proposing to increase that budget by $4,099. Our fire department is hosting, plans on hosting a flu-shot clinic for the homeless and severely low-income individuals in our community to prevent the impact of COVID-19 by keeping those populations healthy, hopefully with flu shots. And that program is expected to cost $4,550. And then the Development Services Department will be running an eviction foreclosure prevention program only for the 50% to 80% below annual adjusted median income for our community. Other programs in our community are helping those that are below the 50% AMI, and so we can't have a duplication of services with this fund. So we will hear a lot that there's a great need for eviction and foreclosure prevention assistance, but this is your, your higher-income individuals that we are seeking to help. So it will be people that have not lost income, lost all of their income, but have a reduced income because of COVID. So we will see what the, what the need really is for that. And then we have two public facility projects with the remaining funds. $50,000 is going to the food bank. We had already granted them $175,000, but as you just heard, they have a great need to move into their larger facility, and so this additional funding will really just help expedite that for a total of $225,000. And then the Boys and Girls Club, instead of using the $10,000 that was previously awarded for summer camp with the, once school opens, they anticipate needing a lot more cleaning services in response to COVID, and so that $10,000 will be shifted to the Boys and Girls Club facility for deep cleaning. So tonight is the public hearing. Our public comment period ran from August 26 until tonight. That is reduced for the federal guidelines to ensure this money can be spent quickly. If council approves this night, then we will submit those amendments to HUD by the end of the week, and once we receive approval, then we'll move on to contracting so that we can start reimbursing these agencies.
We adopt the amendments and CDBG has presented?
May I open a public hearing first?
Oh, sorry.
If that's the conclusion, I will now open a public hearing on this. Those online, please raise your hand, and anybody present with us tonight, please step forward if you want to speak to this matter. Seeing no one step forward, is anybody online? With that, I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I so move.
Second.
A motion and a second on item C2. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Mayor, item C3 is an ordinance amending Development Services.
Fulgham?
Good evening, again. So these are pretty simple amendments to our fees. As you remember, with House Bill 52, we no longer can collect fees based off valuation for residential, so we are again tweaking our residential remodel. We have found that there's, it's difficult to capture when you are doing a remodel permit for, say, a new HVAC system. Do you capture just the 20 square feet that the, you know, return closet encompasses? Or do you capture the entire square footage of the house? Because, of course, the system affects the entire house. So we are proposing to drop down that fee and then capture the whole house, just to make it simple and really more uniform amongst our different development specialists when they're collecting those permits. And then we are recommending a $20 increase in the base fee for commercial building permits. Soon as you can see on the screen, our base fee is $100, and that will go to $120, and then we have different, of course, classifications based on the value. So we are just recommending a flat $20 increase in the base value, base fee across all the values, just due to the complexity of commercial projects and the amount of time that we spend on them.
Are there questions for Ms. Fulgham? Hearing none, I will now open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone in the audience, please step forward that wants to speak to this. Seeing none, Mr. Foot, is anyone online? I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to adopt C2.
Second.
I have a question.
C3 or C2?
C3.
C3. C3. That was what was in my head.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. What changed between this year and last year in the complexity of commercial projects?
Not so much as far as what's changed over year over year. It's something now that we're having to do more on the energy code side of things and actually redo, looking at redoing our codes and how we're applying. It's just our digging into it has been more. So the statutes haven't really changed. It's the amount of work and research that we're having to put into them to make sure that we're complying.
When did we last adopt the energy code?
There was big changes three years ago in our last three, so we really should have made these changes three years ago.
Yeah, I just don't see a need to increase the fees for, we haven't done anything different with codes. Codes haven't changed. Complexity is still there. I don't, I'm just kind of against it from, from that perspective. It looks like we're raising a fee to raise a fee when it's put in the, in the explanation because of complexity, that nothing's changed in complexity. No codes have changed. So what is it?
I think we changed the, the way we've calculated the fees last year, and that was, to some extent, a shot in the dark, but it was hoping to end up at the, at the same level. So I kind of feel like this is just correcting what, what they were trying to fix last year.
That's not the explanation we've been given, though.
Well, that's more for.
Right. That's what we've been given, is that because of commercial complexities, we need to increase fees, but nothing's changed on codes or anything for commercial projects. And so if they would have said, we, you know, we took a chance last year on trying to get it right based on how the state changed the way we can do codes, or do fees, and now we realize that we're still not, we didn't break even from where we were before the change, that's one thing, but that's not what's being presented.
If, if I could add, so the, the change mainly was to residential and as far as state law. The complexity that we've realized over the last three years is it's, we don't know what, how much work we're going to be having to adjust whenever we adopt the new codes. It takes us time to really understand what those code impacts are. And so, yes, now we are three years later, and so we're trying to adjust based off what we've learned over the last three years. over the last three years.
Thank you for correcting me too on the residential.
Relative to codes, and I know it's not specific to this, are we still on a six-year cycle for codes and not the?
We're trying to keep up with three years. So we are, we're six years behind, but we redo it every three years.
So we're in the 215, and the 221 is coming out.
Right.
Well, we can talk about that at another time.
That's a whole nother discussion.
But anyways, is there any further discussion on this matter? Does anybody else have anything to add to the discussion?
No, I understand the, I don't know how you would factor in raising a rate when you don't know what the impact is going to be on staff. So the fact that we're three years behind doesn't make me happy. I'm, hopefully, we're not raising just to raise, you know, like Councilman Bachnight, I think, alluded to, but market correction or some kind of correction so that we're flat and not taking a negative.
Well, if you're having to build to these codes, you didn't have three years to figure it out or design to them.
Sure.
Do you have any idea of what, on a basic commercial project, how much money we're talking about? Of an increase, just an example?
Just $20 because it's to the base. It's not to the incremental.
So the incrementals stay the same, it's just you're adding a $20 fee to every commercial project? Is what we're talking about? Every commercial project fee goes up $20 that way? Okay. All right. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of item C3, say so by a sign of thing. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One?
I know you're surprised.
Mayor, item C4?
Your vote, and I'll defend that to the end of time. So we have a, what is it, six?
Six one.
Six one. Okay. Thank you. And thank you for the discussion. I think honestly, it's kind of a hint, maybe we need to have further discussion on some of the code issues. So we'll pick that up at a later time. So anyway.
Near and dear to two of us.
Huh?
It's near and dear to two of us.
Well, it is. It's very important, actually. So we'll move on to item C4, please.
C4 is ordinance amending Chapter 24 to update and add fees administered by the Victoria Fire Department.
Good evening, Count, Mr. Mayor and Council. We're proposing just a few minor modifications to our fees. Just clearing up some terminology. One of the ones has to deal with our, what was previously fuel tanks. We're changing those to the terminology of above or below ground fuel tanks just because we're starting to see more businesses come in with hazardous materials that are not necessarily fuel, but it's a type of hazardous material tank. So we feel it important to capture that information. And the term fuel, the term being used as a fuel tank was very limited to us to capture that information. There is a minor change on the standby for fireworks, for the personnel, for the staffing. And then the other changes were out of county and out of the Regional Planning Commission's districts for inspection and investigation fees. There's been a couple of times we've been asked to assist either in fire inspections or fire investigations outside the county, and we provided that. But this gives us a way to recoup some of our travel costs and expenses.
Questions for Mr. Legler? Hearing none, I'll now open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone who wishes to step forward, please do so. Is there anyone online? Seeing neither, I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make the motion. We accept it.
Second.
There are a motion and second on item C4. All of those, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mayor, item C5 is an amendment to City Code Section 24-13 Police Department Service Fees, adding VTR 68-A inspection fee of $40 per inspection.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Captain Brishers with the Police Department, and I'm here to talk to you about adding the 68A inspection fee to the charges for the Police Department. The Victoria Police Department has received forms from Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority for 27 years, which pays towards the task force salaries, fringe, overtime, supplies, and equipment. One of the services provided by the task force are 68A inspections. Now, you might ask, what is that? Well, a 68A inspection is conducted by law enforcement officer to verify the identity of a vehicle for registration purposes. This inspection is often needed to obtain a bonded title, register a homemade trailer, register a vehicle that has previously, hasn't been titled, or other reasons. There we go. Whoops. Okay. This is a little high-tech for me. Sorry about that.
You're like 35 years old, man. You should be able to figure this out.
Little bit older than that. I need to go back one slide. Okay. Under the Texas Transportation Code, the city can charge a fee up to $40 for 68A inspections to help recover the cost of the service. Income from the fee can be used to buy grant equipment or as a cash match for the grant to offset the city's obligation. The task force conducts 68A inspections twice a month at different locations, providing the inspections to any person who shows up regardless of residency. Task force officers also travel to Calhoun County, La Vaca, Ruffurio, Gonzalez, DeWitt, and Goliad Counties to conduct 68A inspections. It is estimated that over 70% of the inspections done are for people who reside outside the city limits. The Victoria Police Department is requesting to implement a $40 fee for the 68A inspections to help offset some of the costs to the city. And I'll be happy to take any questions at this time.
Is there a difference fee for inside the city and outside?
No, sir.
So there's no travel recoupment?
No, sir.
Was there ever a fee?
There is a fee. Other task forces are doing it. We've never charged a fee. This is a service that we've been providing free.
Any further questions? Hearing none, I'll now open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone that wishes to speak on it, please step forward. Seeing no one, is there anyone online? Neither, I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move we adopt?
Second.
C5.
Motion and second on item C5, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Mayor, items C6 and C7 go together. For the public's notice, we always post the budget public hearing separately from the ordinance adopting the budget in order to make sure that the public has keen notice of the fact that we are in fact having a public notice on, a public hearing on the budget. But we can read them both together since they only need one public hearing tonight. And so item C6 is the budget public hearing, and item C7 is an ordinance approving and adopting a budget for fiscal year beginning on October 1, 2020.
Mayor and Council, before we go into the public hearing aspect of this, I did want to walk you through a budget highlight document that staff has worked very hard over the last week and a half. I think we went through close to 20 different versions of this. But in any case, one of our goals since I arrived has been an effort for us to modernize the way that we communicate with the public, be very efficient, be very transparent with what we're doing, and ultimately doing a better job of telling our story. We know that the city does amazing work every day, and we need to do a better job of communicating that to the public. And so part of that is communicating our budget. And obviously, our budget document is hundreds of pages and very unlikely for, you know, our neighbors, our friends, our colleagues at work to go through that document to really get at the meat of it. And so it's not uncommon for cities to develop budget highlights. What we've done is put together this document, which, as you can tell, very adequately so, reminds all of us about our mission, our vision, our core values because ultimately, it's important that we have a budget that backs up or validates what our values are. And so I want to draw your attention to the, I guess, opened part of the document since that's really the meat of it. And in essence, through walking you through this document, summarizing the budget that you would be approving tonight and ultimately, we would be focused on implementing. It obviously starts off with a high-picture overview of the fact that the budget as proposed is $146 million. Of that, we know that it's made up of a variety of different funds, with of course, the heavy emphasis being the general fund since that's the fund that provides the core elements that we believe the residents care most about. And so we've decided to specifically highlight what the general fund is. That pie chart-looking thing that you see in front of you, we refer to as the budget wheel. And this was actually a wheel that was developed by the City of San Antonio Budget Office many moons ago that we've stolen the idea for it. And the idea is very simple, which is it's a pie chart showing the expenditures in the middle, and the ring around it shows the revenues. And so in one image, you can clearly see where the revenues come from and where the expenditures go related to the general fund. And you almost, you can see percentage-wise sort of how much of that goes to what. So for instance, close to 60% of our funds go towards public safety, which in our case includes police, fire, and municipal court. And you could easily tell, looking at this diagram, that that 60% is very close to simply just the property tax and sales tax. Now, obviously, that's a little higher, but you get the gist of what that diagram's attempting to showcase. Right below that, we're showing a historical trend because we wanted to find a way to effectively communicate that our sales tax revenue is going down because of the COVID pandemic. And we also wanted to be transparent with the fact that our property tax revenues are going up because of increase in assessments and new improvements, but not because of a change in the tax rate. The tax rate there is listed, and there's a note that reminds all of us that it's the same tax rate as last year. Now, from the overall $146 million, we know that the priorities for residents and for your constituents are going to be the infrastructure, public safety, parks and recreation, and some other elements that have plagued our community such as the infrastructure and the need that we saw related to Harvey. And so that all is summarized on the right-hand side. At the very top, you can see a breakdown of the street and utility projects from the maintenance programs to some of the capital projects that we've discussed and presented to council since the budget workshops in June. We also actually added the Ben Wilson Corridor Project and made a note that that's a project that would be funded by UHB. But that's obviously a very large project, and even though that's not necessarily stemming from our tax dollars, we felt it was important to include it because that's a big project that's going to obviously be noticed by residents once it begins. And that schedule has that project beginning next summer, which obviously is within fiscal year 21. Key initiatives below that, we wanted to make it very clear that we value our public safety personnel and that we value our police officers and firefighters. And so we made it a point to put that on the middle of the page to make very clear that we're enhancing that operation. We're adding four police officers as well as adding some equipment and some apparatuses to those operations. Below that is a reminder of the Harvey-related grant funds. You may recall when we presented the presentation, there was roughly a $10 million difference in the overall budget for fiscal year 21 than it was for 20. And literally, all of that was because of the Harvey-related grant funds. And so that's highlighted there as well. As a reminder to everybody, there's a small description of what all those projects within the close to $10 million represent. And then below that, we hit a couple of the quality of life items associated with Main Street Downtown. So we talked about the fact that we are investing in a grant program to hopefully help restore and help development downtown. We also want to be very proud of the fact that we're partnering with HEB for a Christmas tree downtown. You know, for us, it's very important that we have the very best Christmas celebration downtown. You know, we want Victoria to be and have the celebration for Christmas that all the smaller communities around us envy, not the other way around. And so we want to make sure that our community has an awesome Christmas experience downtown. And so we're obviously investing in that Christmas tree with a huge sponsorship from HEB. Parks and Rec, we've heard over the last couple of weeks, I've received some questions from some of you related to the duck pond. And so obviously, that's in there. We're allocating the $1.25 million. The initial estimate for the duck pond project was actually a little higher than that, and we are applying for a grant that we hope we receive so that we don't have to use that entire $1.25 million. But we also know that the duck pond is of high value to our community. And so we've set aside that amount of money so that even, in worst-case scenario, if we don't receive the grant, we have a good amount of money to be able to proceed with at least the bulk of that project. And it is, and it's something that we take care of in 21. And the Riverside Splash Pad, which is in conjunction with a community foundation who has supported those efforts, and so we're including that project in there as well. And I apologize, but Councilwoman Scott, can you remind me the name of the foundation?
The Tracy Foundation or the Shanklin?
No. Yes. Thank you.
The Shanklin Foundation.
Yes, thank you. I made a note, but couldn't remember. And knowing me, I would have mispronounced it anyway. So thank you for that.
Yes, very much.
The, if you can go back to the, to the cover page version of this where it shows this. What you see there on the left-hand side is really the back part of the brochure, and this is a reminder to us of some of the master planning efforts that we'll embark on in fiscal year 21, which of course are for the downtown, parks and rec, the thoroughfare and drainage. And so again, we wanted to highlight this, that's a big part of what's going to be taking place during fiscal year 21. I imagine it's going to play a big part of what the mayor speaks about next week as well. And all in all, this is all part of the COM 2035 Plan. I know we discussed that in December, and we do plan on actually scheduling a very specific PLAN 2035 workshop with council in the next month or two where we will actually have the consultants associated with all of those master plans provide an overview to you on what the scope of that plan is and us discuss the timeline, as well as discuss any other elements associated with the 2035 Plan. And so with that, that's a recap, quick recap of the budget. And I hope that we all utilize this document as a refresher of all of the positive things that the city's looking to do in fiscal year 21. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Master plans, are they going to be delivered in time to have a meaningful impact on the 2022 budget?
Some of them might, some of them might not. Our big goal is to be as prepared as we can whenever debt opens up in fiscal year 23 and 24. The reality is that some of these processes will run from 12 to 18 months, and so it will take some time. There might be elements of those plans, though, that we can still utilize, even if they're in draft form, in order to help us make some decisions moving forward. As a quick example, the Parks and Recreation Plan will actually include some conceptual plans for Riverside Park as well as Ethel Lee Tracy Park. And so some of those things, we might be able to conclude sooner rather than later so that we can focus on those specific parks if we wanted to in fiscal year 22. We know there's a lot of ideas already flowing about Riverside Park, especially as we work on the soccer fields and a few other unique special projects that are going on right now. And so we'll definitely prioritize that to hopefully be ready for next year. The drainage one, may or may not. The downtown one, some aspects of that will help, especially when it comes to some of the redevelopment efforts. So I think we could, I guess my point is we can use some of the draft versions or some of the work to implement in fiscal year 22. But complete, complete, it'll take a while for these to be completed.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, that was a long answer to your question.
But I hope we get back to having work sessions on the 2035 Plan like we started, and then we kind of got into the COVID world there. But I think some of the input from these studies could be very important in helping how we move forward on that 2035 Plan and set the priorities a little more accurately. And the, one thing I will note down here that, and I mention it all the time, when you look at the volatility of our two tax sources, you can see where property taxes are much more stable and predictable than sales tax. And to me, that's the essence of developing an economic growth policy that expands our tax base because that will bring stability, I think, more to our community.
Right. And that budget wheel clearly shows that that stable revenue only accounts for about a third of our revenues.
Right.
And so really, what we're saying is that only a third of our revenues we can depend on.
So.
Which puts us in a tricky spot.
Good information. Good information. Thank you.
This will also be available online, and so we'll make sure to send those links out whenever we get that. So are there any other questions?
Ryan, have you anything to add? Okay.
He's the man.
Good deal. All right.
I don't know about all that, but, okay.
Well, I don't think there will be any objection to combine the two. We did it last week, so I'm assuming we can move forward to that. So I will now open a public hearing on both items C6 So I will now open a public hearing on both items C6 and C7. So anyone wanting to speak to either one of these items, please step forward. Seeing none, I will ask anybody, no one's online, so I will now close the public hearing. Now, do we want to vote on these individually, Mr. Goose, or both combined?
Item six does not require a vote, only item seven.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion on item C7.
Move to approve, adopt C7?
Second. I will have a motion, a second on item C7. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mayor, item C8 may need some explanation. State law requires that we pass a separate resolution ratifying the property tax rate before we adopt the property tax, and so this is a resolution required by law to ratify the property tax reflected in the budget.
Any presentation on this?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I will now open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone that wishes to speak, please step forward. Seeing none, is there anyone online? No one online? Then I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
No move.
Second.
A motion and a second on item C8. Any further discussion from council? Will you do? Can I reopen the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Then I'll reopen the public hearing to hear.
Is that board, you're now?
Okay. All right, then I will close the public hearing. So we have a motion and a second on the item. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mayor, item C9 is an ordinance setting the tax rate for the 2020 tax year at a total rate of $0.6115 per $100 of property valuation.
Need presentation?
No, sir, no presentation.
Seeing none, I'll open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone wanting to speak to this matter, please step forward or raise your hand online. Seeing no one, step forward. Mr. Foo, do we have anybody online? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we adopt item C9.
Second.
A motion and item, a motion and a second on item C9. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Right here. It was my ignorance, I meant to pull D3 and D4 from the consent agenda, I had a question.
Okay, well, we shall do just that. And again, what were they?
D3 and D4.
Okay, we pulled item D3 and D4.
Mayor, if you'd like to take care of the other two remaining consent agenda items first.
Yes, sir.
They will be handled by a single vote tonight. They are first the adoption of minutes from the city council meetings of August 11th and August 18th, and then D2 is granting variance to Section 21-82A for property located at 99 Sanchez Road, which would allow construction of a carport within a required setback.
I move we adopt the consent agenda as read, one and two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda items one and two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now, will you handle each of the others individually, please?
We can do them together.
Item D3, I'm sorry, was that a question?
Oh, that's fine, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Item D3 is a resolution awarding the Airline Road Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project to Cruz Tech Incorporated of Houston, Texas, for their low bid of $255,885.
Gil, do you have a presentation?
Oh, I think he just has a, going to answer a question. One, I just wanted to say hi.
Hi, you just needed to see me smile.
Exactly. I didn't notice that there was a completion date on these projects for D3 or D4, and just wanted to know if there was a completion date.
Yes, there is a completion date. That was my error, not putting it in the memo.
Is it a secret?
No, it's not a secret.
Could you let us know?
Let me see if it's in the presentation, and it is not. I don't know, I'll be honest, I don't know, but we do have it in the contract that there is a completion date. It's a calendar date project for both of them. So we will hold firm to the contractor to make sure they complete it on time.
Okay.
And we'll obviously make it a point to follow up with you, but obviously, it's council's discretion, and so up to council if you want to proceed or wait until you have that additional information.
The lowest bid, and, but I would like to see that in the future.
Okay, it usually is. It's our air, my air, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
One more question.
Thank you for keeping us on our toes.
I have one more question. Ken, are we using already the new method of awarding the contracts?
This one was a unit price contract. It just lent itself better to that because it's very specific in the type of technology we're using, but we are addressing that in our next project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, we're still on item D3, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that really covers D3 and D4, so if you want to combine them, that would be fine.
Same, so can we combine the vote on each one of them?
There's no objection, we can take them both up together. D4, for the public, is the award of the 2019-2020 Manhole Rehabilitation Project, also to Cruz Tech Incorporated of Houston, Texas, for their low bid amount of $136,731.
Okay.
I move we adopt.
Second.
Both are?
Yeah, both done together, I'm sorry.
Okay, items, for there is a motion to adopt both items, D3 and D4. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second.
I had a question. On D4, is that eight manholes? Because it's got linear footage on there, too.
It said nine.
Nine?
It said eight and then nine in there as well.
Okay.
It's eight manholes, completely rehabbing them, and then the ninth one is already a fiberglass manhole, and we're going to redo the ring and lid.
Any further question on either of these items? Hearing none, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor of items D3 and D4, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mayor, that takes us to item E1, which is a resolution allocating funding to outside agencies from the 2020-2021 Hotel Occupancy Tax Funds.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, it's good to see you all in person again. As you may remember, we are moving the hotel occupancy tax allocations out of the city attorney's office, which Thomas has thanked us for many times. But we are, we're moving that out, we're moving it to the CVB and sort of allowing our office this go-around to sort of facilitate that, although I will commend the CVB for their efforts and in the work they've done in making. The committee process happened almost as flawlessly as the legal team did, and I thank the legal team for their help in that as well. So you may remember the process that we outlined for you from the very beginning, back in, I guess, June when we had our first budget meeting, we outlined this process for you. We have done kind of the first three steps, and today, we are in that fourth box where you are considering that resolution awarding those funds. So the committee process looked a little bit like this, where we received the applications in the beginning. The applications were weighted and scored based on two different sets of criteria, objective evaluations, meaning did they have all the right paperwork? Did they have verified room nights? How was their performance the last time they received the funds? Those kinds of things. And the subjective criteria was more along the lines of, were they going to meet a community impact? Were they going to engage tourism partners and do other things? And that was largely done by the committee. The CBV staff did the objective evaluation. Those two evaluations produced a total score that then multiplied by the total number of points allowed us to determine what percentage of points each applicant accounted for in the total corpus of points. Multiplied that by the percentage of available funding that you allocated as $135,000, and then that came up with their initial funding going into the meeting of the committee. The committee then was able to sort of review and have discussions about the applications and their thoughts, and make adjustments that math simply didn't account for in the weight of these applications. So before I go past that, I'd like to make sure I answer any questions you have on that process, and then also make sure that I acknowledge and personally thank the members of that committee for their help and their participation this year in that. So are there any questions on that process before I jump right into the recommendations?
When you followed this process, did you have to do a lot of change to it to allocate the funds, or was this pretty much what you followed?
So this process is the same process that really was developed by Mr. Goose, but there weren't a significant amount of changes. The dollar values, in some cases, may have been large, but most, for the most part, we started the conversation by sort of going through and marking off the ones that we knew we were happy with the math or the numbers. And in some cases, some people, their score would have warranted more money, but their request was less than what their score would have warranted. So then what happens is that money goes back into the pot to be spread across.
Okay.
And so, so not a ton of changes.
A couple of questions, too. You said it was, CBD did the complete process?
CVB did the, the objective evaluation scores, so they looked at documentation, they evaluated whether things were turned in on time, stuff like that. CVB and they worked with finance as well, and then the committee members individually did the subjective side.
Do we have the privilege of looking at what each organization requested?
Sure, we can send that out. I don't have it handy with me on this, to put it on the screen. Joel Novosadis here, and he does have the ability to tell you, he has some spreadsheets with what they have on their request.
The objective and subjective comments had me concerned, but then you also said, you know, what the community impact would be. Because I know there's one organization, the community impact is huge, and looking at the other, what the other organizations got did not seem to warrant it. And when I talk about the community impact being huge, we're talking about a church that puts on a dinner when there's hundreds of people helping. All the food is bought here in Victoria from the grocery stores. The transportation, there's hundreds of cars involved, buses, handicap vehicles, and to see what they got, it's really, it doesn't make sense at all. It, I mean, if there's subjective involved, then it wasn't, it wasn't. And the community impact was measured, it doesn't make sense at all.
Well, so that's always been a subjective criteria as part of the process, and this year, the committee coming back, only two of the committee members were new to the process, so the other four were people who've done this in the past, and four of our 16 applications were new applicants. And so the, I don't know which entity you're talking about, but there's a good chance that they were an applicant that had been part of the process as well. So that said, we're happy to share any of the information with you.
I'd like to see it, because it does, I mean, if there's a community impact involved, then it does not make sense at all, though, because some of these organizations that got a lot of money, more than others, people pay big money to attend, hundreds of dollars to attend, and this one organization doesn't charge the participants at all. In fact, they're invited because of their disabilities and their injuries from being a United States veteran, a military person, and the impact is huge for that whole week. I mean, we're talking about boats, fishermen buying fuel, groceries, hotel impacts. It does not make sense at all, and if the criteria hasn't changed from the time that the city attorney did it, then we need to change that criteria, because this isn't working.
Could I ask, when you talk about community impact, though, as I've understood the allocation of the hotel occupancy taxes, it is most directly related to how many heads or beds that are paid for by people outside of our community. It's not people coming to our community and, yes, buying groceries and eating in restaurants, but either staying in people's homes or staying, staying in a hotel that's paid for by money that's already here in the community, so it's not more money coming in. And so to me, I guess my question is, is your community impact that you're talking about not necessarily a function of something that happens here in the community that a lot of people drive to from their homes here in Victoria or surrounding places and don't stay in hotels? Is that the distinction that you're drawing?
To some extent. I'll, I've actually just pulled up the criteria, that all three subjective criteria points that the committee was directed to. Community and economic impact refers to information provided within the application that demonstrates the events, the event or projects, community and economic impact with a narrative explanation, along with supporting data, provided with the application event. So community support is a second one, which may be more along the lines of kind of what you're thinking about. I think you are correct, Ms. Scott, in terms of community impact, in terms of largely an economic driver. The community support piece is the, community support in terms of other organizations or other engagement and activities. The contribution to use category, meaning there's one of eight categories they could have participated in, and just the, how, how well each individual committee member felt that that application provided a contribution to that category. And keep in mind that these are, these are weighted and scored by the members of the committee themselves, and so to be able to tell you what they were thinking or why they chose to award or score what one was outside of our conversation in the meeting, I wouldn't be able to tell you that.
One of the things, too, to also, that might impact the way that somebody might, might respond to the subjective pieces, is the background and, the background and experience that is represented by this committee. And so this committee is made up of individuals from the tourism industry, and so their viewpoint is going to be on the side of community impact related to tourism, community impact from that perspective. That's the way that it's, the process has, has run. We did try to be more specific with the community impact part, but at the end of the day, it's still viewed from a tourism standpoint, because that's where the dollars are originating from. And I know that doesn't probably help address your concern, but I think we can't lose sight at the end of the day of what the source of funds are and the background of the individuals that are reviewing this process and this application.
At one time, if the organization paid for the hotel room, it wasn't counted. So is that still a factor? If the organization paid for the hotel room and not the individual, is that still factored in that it doesn't count?
Well, so in terms of how they use the money, it would, it would still earn them points toward a verified hotel room, but the formula essentially sort of eliminates that, that use as an eligible use, if that makes any sense. So they get, they can count the hotel room toward their count, their count of hotel rooms, but it doesn't award them points in their contribution. And in fact, one, one organization, the committee made a, made a selection, made a commitment in the application process, made a decision, probably a better word, to reduce some funding from the, from what the formula recommended because of hotel rooms they, they knew to be accounted for in the, in that.
Now, that was something that Mr. Goose had put in it several years back, correct?
Yes, sir, that has been a part of the formula for years.
Is there any chance that we could get that changed? Because there's still heads and beds. It's just because the organization's paying for it because of these disabled veterans.
That wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor of that, because the whole point of this is to increase tourism, increase the, if you will, very graphically, the importing of money from outside of our community into our community. And what you're proposing is just churning money that's already here, and it's not that that doesn't have an economic benefit, but there's a much greater economic benefit from importing money from outside the community, and that's what I think this is designed for, as well as a lot of our other economic development.
Exactly, but a lot of that donation to that organization comes from outside the community, from all over the state of Texas, so it is new money to Victoria in many ways. It's just that this organization chooses to pay for the hotel room for these disabled veterans because of their situation, so... So I understand what you're saying, but that's not 100% correct.
In that one case, possibly so.
Yeah, and like I said, the economic impact is great because of sales tax, of fuel, groceries, of local people spending money to make this huge dinner for hundreds of veterans available. This is beyond impact. This is huge. Huge impact in Victoria.
I would think that.
So is there any chance of ever getting that changed?
Well, I mean, again, that, you're right, it's huge, but it's not heads in beds.
It is heads in beds.
Well, but what you're talking about in saying that it's huge because of the dinner or the, you know, that, yeah.
Well, I'd like to hear his answer, okay?
Sure. I was just going to comment that absolutely there is a way to change the process. When Derek stood here and presented in June, he very specifically verbalized that we would be following, for the most part, the same process that we have followed in the past. And that was an intentional decision because of the transition of the overall process from legal over to, you know, city manager's office slash CBB. I recall you and I having a conversation about it, which was why we wanted to be more specific with the subjective evaluation part of it. When Derek presented in June, you know, Councilman Bucknight was very specific that he didn't want, you know, the process to change. And a couple of others might have verbalized that comment as well. And so that's why we proceeded down the path that we did. But ultimately, we can change the process. You know, obviously, this is something that is of high interest to yourself and maybe other council members. And so it sounds like what would be appropriate is when we do change the process is have that discussion with council, since ultimately it's council that would be signing off and approving these recommendations. And so we can certainly have that conversation. We can have that conversation probably one of two ways. You know, one, we could, you know, sort of close the door on this year and simply commit to changing it next year. But at the end of the day, it's council's discretion. If you want us to reassess the process this time, there's nothing that would prevent us from sort of going back to the committee, you know, incorporating some additional subjective measures into that evaluation and then recalibrating everything. You know, so we do have options. But that, again, is at the discretion of council.
And again, I appreciate that comment. And I'm not criticizing Mr. Goose in any shape, form, or fashion. And you're right, because we used the old process. This year is done, but in the future, especially next year, for events of this huge, with this big of an impact, where money's coming in from really all over the nation because of these veterans are from all over the United States, not just Texas. It's something that we really need to look into. And just because the organization didn't, just because the organization paid for the hotel room, I don't think it should disqualify them because they're still heads in bed. And not only that, families have to accompany some of these disabled veterans because of their disabilities. So there's not just one person coming, although there's one person on the list. There's husbands, wives, kids, aunts and uncles. Huge impact on our sales tax in Victoria. Anyway, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
If I may add something, you know, there's always a problem with rules. It seems like rules always have an exception. And I think we're looking at a situation here where this one organization could be deemed kind of an exception to the rule, but it doesn't fit everything exactly. I would like to see us look into doing as you suggest, perhaps next year, to reevaluate the process. But I would like to see us even explore, are there any other type of funding mechanisms we could assist them with on this venture? Are there any other types of monies, grants or stuff that can be used? Because it is a big deal for our community. I went to one of the fundraisers, one time it's Community Center, and it was literally packed. I mean, it was there. And the amounts of money that were raised on their behalf is astounding. So I would suggest that we really take a hard look at even beyond just this sales tax incentive to see if we can find ways to help them promote their events and find other, and help them, assist them to perhaps find other funding mechanisms as well on top of it. Just a thought.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that greatly.
Yeah, and we can certainly do that. But, you know, we want to make sure that we don't open Pandora's box and all of a sudden you have a bunch of other events. I mean, right off the cuff, I think the easiest thing to do would be to simply just reevaluate, you know, the inclusion of hotel rooms that way. That would impact every other organization as well. Because some of the other organizations also pay for hotel rooms for artists, musicians, you know, things of that sort that typically are discounted. You can correct me if I'm wrong. And so we can certainly, you know, simply just recalibrate by just looking at it differently. And it probably wouldn't take us very long to do that this year, you know, if that was the direction from council. If you were simply curious to see what that allocation breakdown would look like by simply counting all those rooms that were submitted by the organizations, regardless of who pays for them.
Thank you.
Well, I would like to see a list of the grants with how many hotel stays for each agency. When you put up 2,000 for this agency, how many, how many heads in beds? For each one? So we can see, because there are some, I see some of these people that get the same amount every year. And I honestly don't even know if they're doing heads in beds because they're a local thing and I think people drive in to go to their thing. So I would like to actually see, when we do the grants, how many hotel stays for each agency that's applying? I also like to know how much they're applying for. I didn't see that anywhere.
Right. We can certainly provide more information. But keep in mind that it's not solely based on the heads in beds. And so I would hate to publicly, you know, show a graphic that, you know, might lead, simply by just that one factor alone, lead to the presumption that, you know, we've allocated them incorrectly, right? When really, it's a totality. I just had a side conversation with Thomas because I was asking him if he had ever showed that information before when he handled the process. And he mentioned that he had not. Because we also want to keep the integrity of the process and keep the integrity of the involvement of the committee, right? I mean, there's a reason why council has deferred that responsibility to a committee to exactly look at, you know, those specifics. And so we can certainly revisit that conversation. But I would want to make sure our staff that we're following the direction of council. And so it sounds, again, like we simply just need to have a conversation as a group to regroup on what this looks like, which, again, we can certainly wait until next year or even just reassess now. It's not my place to try and pin you into a corner, into thinking that, you know, you have to approve this tonight because at the end of the day, it's your discretion and we don't. And so we're, I guess, seeking guidance on how council would like to proceed with it.
I'd like to go with what you've presented, but I'd like us to discuss the objective criteria for next year at another time. Because it's up there, subjective evaluation, I would like to know what that means. I mean, what?
Right.
And objective evaluation, I'd like to know what that means.
True.
Because maybe the council would have input into what those things should be. And then they can decide. But I don't know what those are.
I don't have a problem looking at the process again, but Ms. Lelice and Dr. Young will remember when it was a full force lobbying effort from the community in front of the council to come up. And we had to assign all this stuff. And Mr. Goose can remember as well. And it's much better to develop a set of criteria. It doesn't mean that the criteria shouldn't be revisited and maybe looked at again. And that's fine. But I don't want to get back where there's tons of information. It's always good to see what they asked for and what it was allocated, you know, how it played out, you know, someone asked for 40,000 and got 10. And but at the same time, I don't want to just totally scrub the whole thing and go through all that lobbying and everything. I like that it is managed by a committee and I trust those people on the committee. And I agree with Mr. Garza that they're looking at it from a strictly tourism. What are they bringing in?
So if I can make a couple of points real quick on the process itself and the evaluation of it. One, I've been through this process and assisted this process with four cities. This is the most thorough, most exhaustive process that I have ever seen and the most thought has been applied to this process than any city I've dealt with. So it is a great, great starting point for the Tourism Advisory Committee that we would like to sort of shift this to next year in place of the Hotel Committee. So that criteria, that evaluation is a good conversation for us to have. On the hotel rooms, the way that it was explained to me by one of the members of the Hotel Committee, Hotel Tax Committee, was if we allow them to pay for the hotel room night using the hotel tax that we only collect 13% on that room, we get 13 cents back on the dollar. Now, that is a tunnel vision, looking at only hotel tax. It's not counting sales tax, it's not counting any other area of contribution. But for a strictly hotel tax return on investment, the logic behind that recommendation is the 13 cent return on the dollar. And that's, and in this case, actually, for the city, it's a seven cent return. So that's the strict, straightforward logic. Doesn't mean it can't change, doesn't mean that there aren't other factors to consider. That's just what was in play. And what I'll do, I've been able to pull up on my iPad. In a moment, I'm going to put up the chart on the screen that tells you what we're recommending for each applicant. I will tell you what they requested and we can go through any conversation if you'd like. If you feel like that's going to drag the conversation out longer, I can just email that to you later.
I'm going to accept item E1.
You can email it to us later and I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second and then we will, if there are any further discussion. I think the points were well taken from everybody and I think that we can move forward and reconsider. I don't think tonight's the time to do it.
Can I ask one question?
Mr. Garza, Delago, if you have any further comments, please speak up.
I want to thank him for Mr. Farrell's hard work. And so no criticism on you or the process that you were given. I just would like to see, just like to see it revisited for next year. Good work, thank you.
Well, it's a great time to do that.
And I think it's important to know, I think you were going to make the appeals point.
Yes, sir.
So go ahead. I don't want to steal your thunder.
Well, so we did notify every person and every group of what they were, what we would be recommending to you tonight. And they had about a week, six days, to file an appeal with us. And no appeals were filed to any of these applications. So, and again, 12 of the 16 have been this, this isn't their first rodeo. So, you know. I do have one other question I'd like to ask you about. Because remember, all of this is a recommendation from us. And in looking at the process, there is one area where I saw that I thought we might be able to make an improvement. The current process requires you host your event, you submit all your documentation, and then you get reimbursed for whatever you expended. I don't think that's a bad process. I don't think there's anything wrong with doing the reimbursement. I think it saves you quite a lot in lost revenue or money that's, you know, provides some accountability to the process. The question though, that came to mind when I thought about this is whether or not we could improve the attendance at our events or we could improve the quality of the events by improving the marketing that happened prior to the events, using and leveraging these dollars for that, which is an eligible expense. So a second separate process may be that, and this is all to be written in the contract that you have a copy of in your council packet, that entity XYZ publishes a billboard or a magazine article or a TV show or a radio spot, a TV commercial, a radio spot. Once that's published, they've worked out with their publisher and an agreement on their end to say, we'll give you the invoice, but payment is due three to six months after the publication or after the invoice. They submit the invoice to us and then we pay the applicant. We don't pay the publisher, right? Because we don't want to be in the middle of their price negotiations or anything like that. But by allowing them to not have to front the money for the marketing, but they get it paid by the city, that achieves two things. The first is that it potentially makes for better marketing. Maybe they're able to leverage and pay, put more money out there and put more into the marketing in places they otherwise wouldn't. And second, it may allow them to take money that otherwise would have been encumbered on the marketing piece and make the quality of their event, the quality of the performer, the capacity of the state, whatever, better than it would have been otherwise. Now, in the event that that event doesn't happen, I would suggest to you that in our contract, we would require that they reference in order to be eligible for this sort of prepayment of the, or payment prior to reimbursement. The, in order to be eligible for that, their advertisement must somewhere include a reference to our Explore Victoria website. That achieves two things. One, it's marketing. So we have paid for marketing that we wouldn't otherwise be getting out of the deal. And so whether their event happens or not, we still got marketing. And so from the recruitment recovery, that's the thought. The second is if XYZ organization knows that they're going to have to market our website, they're going to make sure their content is, can be found on our website. They're going to make sure that they're using our website and that they're familiar with our website. And so it produces, it adds value to that website itself. So that's a secondary process that would allow everything else, materials, vendors, anything else to be a reimbursement. But marketing, any portion of the event that goes toward marketing, to be paid for after the marketing happens, but prior to the payment of the invoice. So that's the thought in a way in which we may improve some of the rigidity of the process, but also some of the quality of the events and the activities that this sponsors, using the money in a way that's legislatively and statutorily eligible. So that is simply and purely a recommendation. If you tell me no, stick to the straight reimbursement, we'll do that. But if you're comfortable with us pursuing that, that sort of open engagement with the funding, then we'll move forward with that.
And keep in mind that the individual agreements come later.
Yes.
And so the actual agreement language isn't being approved tonight. That would come at a later meeting. But this direction will help, obviously, help us finalize what that contract language looks like.
And your resolution tonight will authorize Mr. Garza to sign those agreements. So they are within his amount.
So within this 135, so we, you know, we as a body put a cap on what we feel comfortable with allotting based upon historical numbers or the year before numbers. Let's say a group gets $10,000 right now and they get $10,000 in the future. So out of that, they're going to take some marketing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they'll have to roll the dice and figure out.
That's correct. It's, I mean, the skin, the skin of the game is theirs.
That's what I'm getting at.
Essentially hiring them as marketing contractors.
They'll reimburse me.
I don't like it. They're getting a certain amount for an event. It gets reimbursed at the end as you show the proof. I don't see a need to pay for the upfront marketing. And as far as requiring the inclusion of Visit Victoria or ExploreVictoriaTexas.com, we should already be doing that. We're already given the money. Why aren't we not doing that?
Mr. Bucknight, I can jump in here and say that the contract has required for years that the promoters actually include promotion of the City of Victoria at the same level that any other donor to their project would.
I remember that, yes.
The only difference here is that he's requiring that it be that specific website that's listed.
Right, as opposed to just the city logo.
Add that.
Well, that's, that's an option.
I see a slippery slope if you're, they get funding just based on an invoice?
Well, the marketing, the publication has to also be submitted. So the publication has to be done. So if it's a billboard, we need a photo of the billboard. If it's a magazine ad, we need to copy that ad. Whatever it is, that publication and the invoice have to be submitted.
Lot of, lot more paperwork on that end.
It is, but if it produces a better event, that's the thought.
How's it going to produce a better event? They need their money anyway. They've already told you the budget for the event, right? That's part of the application process on when they apply. They know what they're budgeting for their event. So it doesn't matter on the funding piece. It can come at the end. They know what they have to save and what they have. They know what they have to save and what they have to have to pull off the event. They still got to show the proof at the end to get reimbursed.
And in this case, they would still have to show proof at the end that they paid.
Yeah, but what happens if COVID comes along and you can't hold the event? And you've already spent all the marketing dollars?
And that's the.
We take, take, if it's fifteen percent of the hundred and thirty five thousand, so about $20,000. Well, how's the city get that money back?
Well, the logic is that it would be counted toward a marketing expense.
Yeah, but you should already be having do this website in the original contract and we're not out $20,000.
Sure.
I don't see it as getting a bang for the buck. We can already request this.
We can, we haven't. And the thought, the thought here is if it's an opportunity for improvement. If you don't feel it's an opportunity for improvement, then okay.
Yeah, I'd see it, I see it just as a way to lose money on an event that's not held as opposed to we weren't out any money for it.
So the event organizer is going to lose the money.
Well, I I like the idea of including the requirement or the the advertising. But, you know, there were a lot of events this year that there was some advertising and then then they didn't occur. And just making that as a comment. And a lot of times with these organizations, they do their advertising and a lot of it upfront, but the money doesn't come in for them until the event or their sponsors come a lot closer. So I think this is a creative and a a new way to perhaps assist them ahead of time. Yeah, there's some risk involved and I almost see it as if it doesn't turn out and then they're an applicant again the next year. It could also count against them the the following year. But I I kind of, I like the idea just as an offsetting opinion.
Well, I feel that if they go, I mean, don't we require them to have some sort of a budget? And they should know how much they want to spend for advertising. And if we tell them we're going to spend fifteen percent of your, you know, I just, that's just a hypothetical figure, fifteen percent of your allocation, and they were counting on 100%, you've already cut into their budget and they're going to have to find that fifteen percent somewhere else. So, you know, and, you know, if they have a product or something they have to buy, they may have to reduce it. So we're not increasing the quality of their a show or whatever, because we've already cut into their budget for marketing. You see what I mean?
Yes and no. I do see, I do understand the perspective, but the thought is, and the logic behind this at the beginning is, if they're not, if they did the advertising, that money is already gone, right? And so when they find themselves in an event needing a piece of equipment that costs more than they expected or their budget has an error in it or a flaw in it somewhere, which is entirely their fault. But their money is already sunk into the advertising and they can't get it back from us until they file their post-event report. So this frees up what money they would have spent on advertising to be in their bank account when they need it during the event as opposed to after the event. That's the logic. But I I see your point as well.
Is there any way to allocate a maximum percent that no more than 10% of your total ask can be requested upfront for advertising? I think I think everybody's afraid of the open-ended, you know, what happens when somebody says the whole thing is for advertising?
Well, and in some cases they are. So the NAB Museum and the Children's Museum, in both cases, it's an advertising budget.
Whole thing.
Yes, but, yes, sir.
I like the idea of some type of a percent limit on it.
I'm for keeping it the way it is.
I've never had one of these organizations come to me as a problem. When I've served on any of their boards, it's never been brought up as an issue. They're happy to get the donation. I don't, I've never said, never sat there even as a treasurer of one of the organizations and said, man, I sure wish they would have released that money early so we could advertise more or go ahead and pay for advertising. It wasn't, it doesn't run like that. And I don't see a need to create two sets of proofs of payments and creating more work. I just, I don't see the need for it.
So if no other, were you going to say something? Okay, if no other council member has comments on this, were you going to chime in?
Well, is there a motion in the second floor?
Well, there is, but.
I don't know where we're at right now.
So, yeah, so.
We have two different things on the table.
So let me, so let me clarify, so let me try to clarify. And so what's in front of you is the approval of the allocations. And and Thomas, you know, corrected me here on the side, too. I made the comment about these agreements coming back to council and they actually wouldn't because part of what you would be authorizing tonight is that I sign off on those agreements. What I'm hearing is that we leave the structure of those agreements the same that they've been in the past, which is post-event. That seems to be where the majority of council is 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 providing that direction, which is needed for me to sign those agreements that you're authorizing me to sign tonight. And so we've received that that direction from council. We're good with it. We're okay there. You are in the discussion phase of of the agenda item, which again is to allocate the funds to the agencies per the recommendation and authorizing me to sign those agreements. This might be one of those ideas that we kind of throw up on the wall and and revisit with the Tourism Advisory Committee in our effort to to reassess the process. And so we can just table that and have that conversation at that time.
Okay. Include, if you would, that website.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we we can include some specifics there.
So we're being asked to to give you the approval, but we haven't gone through the appeals process.
We have.
No appeals.
They did.
We have. Yeah, the appeals window started and closed already.
And no one, no one applied. Also, just just on the cuff of that, thank you very much for the the conversation on this and and helping us. We we have ideas and recommendations, but it helps us to know how you feel about them, so.
I can say, sitting up here, again, echoing with Councilman Bucknight and Ms. Olise, I don't mean to poo-poo this, but the $135,000 that we've allocated and it's it's varied through the years, but this probably gives some of the most heartache and headache along the way.
Exactly.
And I am very, very grateful and thankful for the the committee that does this job.
Me, too.
Yes.
Call the question.
It's been a motion to call the question. I will, now, I will want, I do want to say thank you for bringing up your concerns on the deal. Thank everybody for the discussion. I think it's been helpful. And obviously, there'll be some talk about next year, but tonight, we're going to do what we need to do. So now, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the allocation, please say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Or aye, pose same sign. And thank everyone again for a good discussion.
Next up, we do have a city manager's report, which is an update on workforce, workforce housing. And Mike Atien will spearhead that conversation. Mayor, would you, would you like to take a quick break?
Well, Ms. Scott didn't ask. I had no problem.
Okay.
I saw her hall pass.
She said, okay, did you issue?
I would say continue.
Thank you.
Well, thank you and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you about workforce housing. But before I begin, I just want to thank Julie Foljam, our Development Services Director, for helping me with this presentation. Also, we have our bond counsel on Zoom and he will also join me on this presentation. So before I begin, Council, I want to talk about the difference between affordable housing and workforce housing. Because there's always questions about what is affordable housing. So affordable housing essentially is housing that does not require a household to spend more than 30% of income for housing. So technically, you are not supposed to spend more than 30% of your income on housing. Whereas workforce housing is housing for people that are moderate or middle income but have difficulty affording housing in the market. So the price range or the, I guess, the median family income for the, that we call workforce housing is typically 60 to 120% of the median family income. So if you are earning less than 60% of the median family income, those individuals typically or generally have housing assistance from the from the Housing Authority via the Housing Developments or from Section 8. Whereas if you are a middle-income individual, someone who's between 60 to 120% of the median income, you have a hard time finding housing because you are not qualified for public assistance, right? At the same time, you cannot afford to buy a house in the market. So you're kind of caught in between in the workforce housing. So this table essentially shows you some of the demographics here in the in the city. So first of all, our current population in Victoria is 67,290. We have a total of 25,498 households and our 2020 median family income is 68,800. The US median family income is currently at 78,500. So we're slightly below or less than the the country. So this table below shows you the breakdown of the individuals who fall within those categories. So in Victoria, individuals earn, who are very low, who earn between 0 to 30% of the income, we have 3,395. In the low-income category, from 35, 31 to 50%, we have 4,214. In the moderate income, which are the individuals that we want to target for workforce housing, we have 5,583. Now, the table to the right shows you the income that those individuals or the households would make. So one person who fall within that moderate income category would be earning 24,000 to 38,000. For a first, a family of four, they will be earning 34,400 to 55,000, $55,000. Also, I want to point out that the need for workforce housing is also an economic development issue. So you would say, why is that? Well, one, because we have employers or companies that use affordable housing as a criteria. So they want to know if their employees will have access to housing. So so that's the important part. Also, we have young professionals who may want to move to Victoria, but if they notice that we don't have enough workforce housing for them, they may not relocate to Victoria.
Atien?
Yes, sir.
May I go back on your first slide? You defined workforce housing as 60 to 120% of MFI.
Yes, sir.
And in your second slide, you said that for Victoria, it's 50 to 80% and that's what we are targeting and that's what defines workforce housing now? So which one is it and why are they different?
So 60 to 120% is the essentially the national definition for workforce housing, but it varies community to community. So ULI, actually, the Urban Land Institute, came up with that definition, that workforce housing are individuals who earn from 60 to 120%. Now, some communities, they go higher. They go to 140% of the median income. But here in Victoria, we're looking at about 60 to 80% of the area of the median family income.
60 to 80 or 50 to 80?
Well, right now, we're looking at 51, but more like 60 to 80.
Okay, okay.
So who needs?
Question on, sorry. Could you put the last slide back up? So your second line is 2020 estimated number of households. You've got 25,498, but then you've got low-income households in Victoria. Those numbers add up to almost that same number. So I'm, I'm not understanding what this slide is telling me.
Okay, so I think, I think you, I think you added 13 plus 5 plus 4 plus 3 and the 13 is the total of the three, the three plus 4 plus 5.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for that. So in regards to who needs workforce housing, so there are normally our public employees and our young professionals in our community. That's our school teachers, our nurses, police officers, firefighters, those who work in the construction trades, retail sales, office workers. They are the ones who need assistance when it comes to finding affordable housing. So this particular chart essentially shows you what a typical, what a first-year teacher or what a first-year firefighter or police officer can afford. So a first-year teacher who earns about 46,200 with a gross income of 3,850 can possibly afford a one-bedroom apartment paying $830 per month in rent. For a firefighter, a first-year firefighter, they could afford a one-bedroom apartment. But for those who are making minimum wage, they would not qualify for an average rent apartment. It's just, it's just, their income is just too low. So this chart here shows you what the typical monthly income to rent in Victoria. So a one-bedroom apartment in 2020, to rent a one-bedroom, you would need to pay about $862. For a two-bedroom, 1,060. For a three-bedroom, about 1,300. So you would see the the required monthly income that you would need in order to rent those units. So there is a need for us to increase, at least look at ways to increase the supply of workforce housing. Those are the individuals who are working, but they cannot afford to find a house that they can afford. So but the construction that of new housing is skewed towards the higher-end market. We're seeing new houses being built that are well over $200,000. So some of the solutions that we think to address the need for workforce housing is land acquisition and reuse for workforce housing. A good example of that is the city purchasing the Ben Jordan property, which could be used for workforce housing. We could also use the Victoria Housing Finance Corporation to help facilitate the financing and construction of workforce housing by issuing bonds. And finally, support the 4% and 9% tax credit. And some of you know that the tax credit program is the primary way or funding source to build or develop new workforce housing. So in regards to the tax credits, the City of Victoria currently competes in Region 10, which includes Corpus Christi. So Victoria has repeatedly lost out to Corpus Christi in the 9% tax credit application. And we have not been awarded a 9% deal or tax credit since 2007. And the last project, I believe, was a project on John Stockbauer. And that was 5201, John Stockbauer, and the project was Salem Village. So the question is, why has it taken so long for us to get a 9% deal? And that's because the QAP, which is the Qualify Allocation Plan, is skewed towards larger cities. So it doesn't favor small cities like Victoria. For example, the the QAP essentially sets out the priorities, the scoring criteria, the matrix on how the applications are scored. And what, three of the things that they use or criteria is population. If you have a, if your city has a population of more than 100,000, you get more points. So Victoria, we have 67,000. So we are struggling because we just don't, to get a, to get a a deal or an award because our population is under 100,000. Second, you have the jo, the job density requirement. So you need to have major employers in your community. And we do, but it's hard to compete with the larger cities like Corpus Christi. And then, of course, distance to services. You need to have, you need to be, the project needs to be within one mile of services such as libraries, a post office, social security office. So what we are currently doing to change that is that we are working with TDHCA. So the city manager and I met with Bobby Wilkinson, who is the Executive Director for TDHCA. for TDHCA, to begin the conversation as to how we can amend the QAP. How can we make it more, I guess, fair to smaller cities? So one thing we're looking at is, is if a locality hasn't received a nine percent tax credit award in the, for a long time, let's say ten years or so, they should get extra points. Because Victoria hasn't received a nine percent tax credit award or deal since two thousand seven. So we're working with the state to see if they can amend the QAP to essentially give us extra points because we haven't received a tax credit award. The second thing we're doing is working with Councilman Barknight, and of course, the mayor, is to partner with State Rep. Jeanne Morrison to see if we could change legislation to have a carve-out, which is a set aside for small cities. Right now, we are competing with Corpus Christi. So therefore, for the most part, we will always lose out because they beat us out on the population. You get more points if you have a hundred thousand people or more, and we don't. So the last example was the Enchanted Gardens, you know, application that we got. They came in second.
By one, by one point.
By one point. And that one point is primarily due to the population. We're under a hundred thousand. So we have to find a way to change that. Either give us more points because we haven't gotten a deal in over ten years, or set aside a pot of money for the smaller cities to compete. So I just want to express again my thanks to Councilman Barknight and, and the mayor, and also to Jeanne Morrison, who will be helping us with legislation this year. So we will put in legislation to ask the state for the carve-out.
Mike, if I, if I may, just for, I guess, educational sake, clarification sake, so the QAP is not a legislative document. Uh, amending the QAP is literally up to TDHCA and their commissioners. They've communicated to us that for the twenty-one cycle of QAP, they're really only open to minimal changes. What they communicated to us literally as recent as last week, and Julie was part of that conversation as well, was that they are actually looking at expanding that radius of the project site that might help us with the job density issue or distance to services. Right now, it's a mile. And so they are, appear to be open to changing that to two miles. I, having had a chance to review the draft QAP that they were supposed to put out, so I don't know if that's actually included in there or not, but my point is that the QAP is literally just up to TDHCA. And so we hope that those conversations with them can yield some sort of improvements there. But the biggest one that hits us is the not having a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, a hundred thousand dol, well, we don't have that either. Hundred thousand dollars, uh, there we go. Hundred thousand dol, damn.
People.
Hundred thousand population. Um, and that's the piece that they more than likely will not change for the fifth, for twenty-one, but appear to be open for twenty-two. And I think that's important to point out because shortly, we're going to talk about the four percent. And ultimately, we hope that you and the community are open for us to pursue the four percent, since e, changing all of this to be more competitive on the nine percent will take some time.
Thank you, Jesus. So to talk about the, the four percent tax credit, which is essentially the, the bond program, we have our bond counsel, Mr. Mark Malvo, on the line, and I will let him do the remaining couple of slides to talk about how the bond process, bond process works. Mark, are you on?
Hi, can you hear me? This is Mark Malvo.
Yes, we can.
Great, great. Um, just a quick introduction, this is Mark Malvo. I'm a partner in McCall Park, Kristen Horton, um, and serves, serve as bond counsel for the City of Victoria. One of my specialties is working on housing transactions, both, both single-family and non-family deals. And, um, as a result, I was asked to give a, 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 a high-level primer on housing tax credits, what they are, and how they're used, and what the possibilities are. Mike, if you could go to the next slide, I can begin. Basically, the housing tax credit, uh, program was created in nineteen eighty-six by the federal government of the Tax Reform Act. It's regulated by the IRS. Uh, the off, uh, the Internal Revenue Code authorized the use of tax credits for workforce housing. Um, and the purpose of it, um, and it was alluded to by, um, Mr. Atean, is that the federal government, um, has a variety of programs that they try to incentivize where the market may not be as efficient as one would like. And for that, that sweet spot of people who are, have incomes that are not low enough to, uh, get federal assistance, and not high enough to be able to become a first-time homebuyer, uh, there are certain incentives in place, uh, by the federal government under the Internal Revenue Code that are used to provide incentives, um, for, uh, for development of workforce housing. Now, um, some people ask, will want to know what is a, 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 a tax credit? Just like you have an earned income tax credit or other types of tax cr, tax credits, a tax credit is basically just an offset to your tax liability. So for instance, if you owed X amount of dollars, um, under, under federal income tax, you could use the tax credit to offset that amount by the value of that tax credit. Currently, there's only so many, uh, so much, uh, so much federal funds that are allocated for, um, housing tax credit. So it's a limited amount of funds that are available. Um, and there's a pretty sophisticated, complex way in which those funds are allocated amongst the states. For the most part, it's based on population. But what happens is, once the, uh, once the, uh, the tax credits are allocated to a state, the state then administers that tax credit. What happens is the incentive for a developer is for them to create workforce housing, either through the construction of new, new projects, or the rehabilitation of existing projects. How it would happen is with TDHCA, the state housing agency, would award, um, those credits to a developer for a particular project. Those credits have a certain value. And what happens would be that the developer would then sell those tax credits that's been awarded to them to, um, another entity, usually, um, a company or an insurance company, a large sophisticated, um, entity that has a large tax burden. They would purchase those tax credits, and those tax credits would be, be used by that purchaser to offset their tax liability. The proceeds of that sale of the tax credits are then used as equity for the construction or rehabilitation of workforce housing. What you'll find is that many of these developers, um, um, they basically work and will put forth so much effort to get deals done, but a lot of times, they don't have the equity to really, um, finance a project. They get that equity through tax credits. And there are a variety, there are two types of tax credits. You can go to the next slide if you don't, please. So this gives you a little bit more of a, um, 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 description of how it works, um, and where it's allocated, how it's allocated, and how much, um, how many units, um, have estimated to be beneficiaries of, of the tax credits. Next slide, please. There are two types of tax credits when you're dealing with, uh, when you, when you're dealing with, um, workforce housing, both of which, um, are administered and managed by the state. The first is the nine percent tax credit. That's the one that, uh, Mr. Atean, uh, referenced. Under that situation, it's extremely competitive. Um, uh, you must apply to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, and when I say, uh, you must, that would be the developer, uh, not the city. Few applicants are awarded these credits. There's a tremendous amount of demand for a very limited amount of dollars. So most projects are, are, don't get these projects. And as we've noticed with Victoria, you've lost out by even a point for the most part to projects in other areas due to the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the points that are allocated for each project. But what you see with the nine percent tax credit as opposed to the four percent that I'm going to talk about, is the nine percent tax credit is the developer will get a larger, um, a larger amount of equity in a transaction because, of course, instead of getting four percent tax credits, they're getting nine percent. What would you also find out with the nine percent tax credits? Usually, those deals are a little bit smaller, uh, because, again, you're not having other types of financing on top of it, it's just a nine percent tax credit. And, um, the deals are usually skewed a little bit more for the smaller, uh, for smaller deals. Um, and that's the ones that I think are more in the sweet spot. So you will get deals that are maybe, um, you know, somewhere around a hundred and fifty units where if you were to get a four percent tax credit, you would get, those deals would be, um, would be somewhat larger. In opposite to the nine percent tax credit, there's something called a four percent tax credit. This is non-competitive. If, uh, all projects that have been awarded a bond reservation, for, for instance, if Housing Finance Corporation of Victoria, um, had a developer that wanted to do a transaction, they would apply, um, to the HSC, uh, to your HSC to, uh, compete, not even, compete might not mean the right word, but, um, try to get a bond reservation. If they were successful in getting a bond reservation, they'd automatically be, uh, awarded four percent tax credits. Again, uh, just as a reminder, these types of transactions are not liabilities of the city or the HSC. These are deals where you act as an issuer, um, to allow the project to get taxes and financing. Uh, that taxes financing is, uh, uh, below what they would have to pay if they were going through a commercial, private lender. And as a result, they get the benefit of having, uh, lower than market, uh, cost of capital, and they also get the equity of selling the four percent tax credits. So it's definitely a different deal from the nine percent. There's still somewhat competition in terms of the bond reservation, but once you get the bond reservation, you're automatically given the four percent tax credits. These are available state, statewide. However, again, uh, because they're joined with, uh, the bond reservation, the bond allocation, um, there is a competitive nature to it, too. There's only so much, so many funds that are available for this. One thing that they have in common is that both types of tax credits require a resolution of no objection from the governmental entity where the project is located. So if there is a four percent or a nine percent tax credit deal in the City of Victoria, the City of Victoria would have to, um, approve a resolution of no objection for them to be able to receive those tax credits. Uh, next slide. Finally, um, I think this is self-explanatory, uh, final funding decisions, and all, um, tax credit applications are made, um, by the governing board, TDHCA. Uh, the nine percent, um, are, um, considered for approval in July. Four percent are considered throughout the year. All units, um, must remain affordable for thirty years. There's constant monitoring. And also, because you have sold those tax credits, the people who purchased those tax credits have millions of dollars at stake, and they want to ensure that the project is, is up to, up to code and up to, um, all the requirements underneath to keep those tax credits. So you have a variety of eyes that have a vested interest in the project, uh, being, being a success. Uh, next slide. I mentioned it a, a little bit, but the HSC, your Victoria Housing Finance Co, Corporation, is, um, is, uh, created under Chapter three ninety-four of the Texas Local Government Code. Its primary purpose is to serve as an issuer of bonds on behalf of developers that are trying to do projects, uh, for workforce housing in the City of Victoria. As an issuer of the bond, that allows the developer, uh, to take advantage of below-market, um, lending rates. Um, to stress again, when you enter into this, uh, these types of deals where you're the bond issuer, the City of, uh, Victoria is not, is not at risk for, uh, of legal liability, nor is the HSC. The purchaser of those bonds are looking to devour in the project, uh, for repayment of, of the debt. Many times, these projects, you know, basically for the last four or five years, developers have needed additional gap financing. And one way they have done that is for the HSC to serve as a general partner to, to the developer. That allows them to get certain, uh, tax benefits, um, that they would otherwise not. Um, I could go into more detail on that if, um, if, uh, if there are any questions, but just to, um, just to reiterate, that's one tool that many developers are using in order to get workforce housing on, in, 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 in certain areas. Do we have another slide? I think that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions. Hopefully, I provided some clarity, um, on how the basics of tax credits.
So that concludes my report, mayor and council. So if you don't have any questions, but I know that, uh, on September eighth is our next Housing Finance Corporation meeting, and I think three of you are on the board as the mayor, Councilman Barknight, and Ricky Delagazza, Councilman Delagazza, who is the president of the Housing Finance Corporation. So at that meeting, we will approve the bylaws and the articles of incorporation and some other topics as well. Thank you.
And to concluding, the purpose was, obviously, educate you, educate the public on these mechanisms, and also convey that we're working both angles. We're working to try and be more competitive with nine percent, but obviously, with the work of, um, re-establishing or recommitting the Housing Finance Corporation, we're also looking to explore, um, the four percent projects as well.
Those are all the city manager's report that we have for tonight.
I know workforce housing is a big issue. I've worked for many school districts, and I've attended a lot of school board meetings over the years. And I've actually heard this subject discussed by various school boards in three different districts about their difficulty in finding, uh, housing for teachers especially. And I think not long ago, we had at one of our partners' meetings a plea from our superintendent at the time, anybody knew of any housing available for new teachers. So it is a real problem, not only for teachers, but in those starting out. So thank you for your work, and we'll continue looking into this.
Mayor, if I may take a moment of personal privilege real quick, I want to apologize in case I actually cussed earlier when I couldn't come up with a proper way to explain a hundred thousand population.
I think you only got out three of the four letters. I think you're okay.
Yeah, so I'm safe?
I think you're okay.
I didn't hear it, but I'll go back and watch the video.
I just want to cover that base because, you know, was not my intention.
I think everybody's going to go watch it.
Somebody's going to create a GIF.
Put a ten-second delay.
We can show this instead of the mayor speaking next week.
Apology accepted.
Thank you.
I think that pretty much concludes the regular business tonight.
We do have executive session, sir.
So it is now seven oh six, so if, uh, Mr. Gush will take us into recess at the executive session.
Certainly. The City Council will recess now for executive session on the first day of September twenty twenty at seven oh six PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. It's executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section five fifty-one point zero seven two, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property interests, due to the fact that a deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in negotiations with a third party, and an executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section five fifty-one point zero eight seven, to discuss or deliberate the offer to a financial or other incentive to a business prospect that the City Council seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the City of Victoria, and with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations. Thank you.
Great.
We meet here.